Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger, Alderman Catalino, Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Musley.
Here.
Declare a quorum. Next is approval of the minutes of the meeting, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Pose.
Very curious. Next is report and recommendation, facade improvement program policy. Okay, Mayor, please.
Couple of quick comments. Friday, October thirty-first is Halloween. Trick-or-treating times are three to eight P.M. for all the kids. And November eighth, Veterans Breakfast at Salt Creek at eight-thirty A.M., memorial to follow on Irving Park by the memorial.
Well, the shape of Wooddale, how's that go?
Okay, is that all?
Twenty-nineth at seven P.M. at the Performing Arts Center at the Junior Arts.
Okay, well, now we'll move on to the report and recommendation of the facade improvement program policy. Ms. Henigan and Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a recommendation from the Streetscape Committee to approve the facade improvement program policy, a draft of which is included in your packets. This is intended to forth some guidelines for future applicants to help people know what would be eligible and have other procedural information put in place. I guess I will keep the discussion there and see if anyone has any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Roy Wesley.
I didn't raise my hand.
I know you were going to.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Figured us help you out.
Must've been talking to the Building Department. How much input did the Building Department have on this?
Ms. Henigan?
No one wants to answer it, so it means none.
Ms. Henigan, do you want to answer that?
Thank you. The Community Development Department staff did research on facade program policies in other communities based on the directive from Streetscape and put the draft together.
Alderman Wesley.
You know, I look at this and I'm looking at it saying, this is more red tape for businesses. This is not business friendly. It's just another committee to go, that they have to go through. Why can't it just come to the council or the B and Z?
I'll answer the question. Streetscape and economic enhancement. I think that that falls under that and that's the committee it should go to when it comes to our committee. They're just there as a preliminary review to look out for the, for the city. Mayor, please.
I just...
Okay, go ahead.
I just look at this and saying it's just more red tape, that they gotta go through this and they gotta go through that. It's just, just put it up there and say, businesses don't come to Wooddale. Keep on saying that because that's what you're doing. It's more red tape. And it says, okay, what happens if it says here, plans reviewed by Streetscape Committee and approved by B and Z. Plans will be reviewed. The Streetscape Committee is the ones that's saying that what we, what the council wants to see is, and what happens if this committee says, oh, well, we don't like it. It says, and approved by. So are they saying they have to give approval on it before it comes to us or is it just gonna go to B and Z with no opinion?
Would you like to answer that, Ms. Henigan?
Sure. The policy actually states that the Streetscape Committee reviews the plans and gives a recommendation to PZB and the PZB approves the plans or disapproves them.
As with all other items and all other committees. Nothing's changed. Alderman Wesley.
So what do we have a Building Department for? Do they give their recommendations too?
Mr. Forrest.
The Building Department will do the plan reviews to verify compliance with the zoning ordinance and the building codes. Streetscape Committee and Economic Enhancement and PZB are going to review these plans and make a recommendation or approval on the aesthetics and how it fits into what the council wants to see as the downtown area is redeveloped.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
And this is probably for, obviously the manager. How much is in the budget for the Streetscape Committee?
Mr. Murmurs.
Well, the Streetscape Committee's funding isn't funding this program, but in general the Streetscape, there's a Streetscape line item in the budget that they recommend projects to the council. I think they get somewhere in the ballpark of sixty thousand every year for projects to recommend, but this project is not connected to their, their line item, which any, any expenditure that they're involved in always comes to the council.
And where does this come out of then?
This comes out of the CIP.
CIP, which is, wait, utility tax again.
Mr. Murmurs.
CIP is utility tax and non-home rule sales tax.
Could you tell me the percentage of the utility taxes paid by the residents?
Mr. Murmurs.
I'm sure if my trustee sidekick, the finance director was here, he would have that on the top of his head. I don't have the percentage, but I can get that to you. He's better at numbers sometimes than I am.
I just see there's too much red tape.
Mayor, please.
It's just saying, basically saying, the same with Streetscape Committee, okay. Streetscape Committee says, okay, let's put a tree here. Let's put a tree here. I'm looking at Streetscape as landscaping, beautification of that, not where we face in a building like this.
Economic enhancements.
Well, then, let the mayor redo, put the committee back to...
Mayor, please.
Actually, I changed the committee because that's all I did. Wanted to give it more to do. That's why we changed economic enhancements. But some of the issues I have here on, what if you have a building with three renters? Because somewhere I read here that, talking about somebody who leases can come up for facade improvement money. Did I read that right?
Ms. Henigan, do you want to answer that?
Yes, that's correct. It's structured so that either the property owner or a tenant with the owner's approval could apply.
Okay, but we have a building, some of those buildings have three tenants. I want it, the two tenants, you decide, I mean, does not. So I'm gonna fix the front of my building and the rest of the facade is gonna be old. I, I, I don't know.
Ms. Henigan.
It would be unlikely, I think, that the committee here would approve such a project.
That's right. That's why I'm saying, I mean, we don't want to waste any time. Basically, everybody's on board or nobody's on board as far as the tenant, the people who are leasing. I mean, if the building owner, he wants to do the whole building actually, comes forward. But I just don't want to waste any time. I feel I want to do it. My two neighbors don't, but I'm coming forward. I'm gonna waste committee time, staff time, all that stuff. It shouldn't even be allowed, correct?
Ms. Henigan.
With regard to the tenant versus the property owner, more likely you would expect to see an application where you have a single tenant, a single tenant building wanting to do some improvements and perhaps the property owner is indifferent, but the tenant wants to make the improvements. That's where I would think we would see more applications. If you've got, say, a strip center where someone's, one person wants to do just some improvements to their portion of it, it may be difficult to meet the minimum investment threshold with that sort of thing since this, the program is geared towards larger scale redevelopments.
Since you brought up the minimum threshold, it's twenty thousand. So project has to be over twenty thousand for them to receive a portion of some funds. So I'm a shrewd businessman. I'm gonna go to twenty thousand, one hundred, and then you're gonna give me fifty percent on that? Or do they have to pay the first twenty thousand for business owner?
Ms. Henigan.
In that example, with a twenty thousand, one hundred dollar project, the property owner could receive up to ten thousand, fifty dollars.
That's what I thought. The other thing is, like, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mayor. Fire away.
We're talking a fifty percent match. I know we discussed it on the first one. You wanted, you know, wanna make a splash, hit the ground running. I thought we were gonna look at something a little less than fifty percent. And I did call on, because Addison was doing this project and they've done it well. I received a list of their projects. Most of their projects are about, I believe, a seventeen to twenty-five percent. They have a few that are about forty percent. We're talking automatic fifty percent.
Ms. Henigan.
The policy is actually worded as up to fifty percent.
Up to fifty percent. So how do, how do we determine each, I mean, do we want to have a, like, a threshold? And if a project was something that looks, you know, at its shoulders, then that's a case-by-case basis? I saw that somewhere in here also.
Ms. Henigan.
Yes, the, anything that wouldn't follow this policy, the council could consider on a case-by-case basis if someone had some extenuating circumstances or a really large-scale project.
And the, for me, basically, we bring a project forward. I'm thinking, well, I should get fifty percent. They only give me twenty, then the next project gets forty. Wouldn't it be, I mean, more streamlined, Alderman Roy was talking about, streamlined process? If we set a number, twenty percent is the, the minimum or something? I don't know. I'm, I'm sure you guys had these discussions. I'm just curious as to...
Well, I'll, I'll chime in. For one, to get something going in the city is why we tend to make it more robust to get some people engaged as the program goes on. I know Addison was a little more proactive. Most communities coming out of the gate when they're trying to affect, you know, some real change, tend to, to give a little more. Afterwards, you can scale it back. I mean, as we, Jennifer's done a lot of research. I've worked with different communities, including the city of Chicago, with, with grant programs and there's, really, it doesn't, we, we could write sixty pages of text to follow and still people wouldn't be happy with how you put that together. And there's always gonna be some ambiguity about what's approved and why he got forty percent and I didn't get twenty percent. That's part of the Streetscape and CDC process going through there and what is, what's the value to the city? How much change are they making? Are they just painting the front? Well, that really doesn't have any value to the city. So it's kinda reviewed on a case-by-case basis and what the value is being returned to the city. Alderman Frank Blazaro was next.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I, I was just pretty much gonna say. This is a case-by-case. Simple language of saying up to fifty percent. So on what Roy was kind of leaning on, who decides on that, on that fifty percent? Is that Streetscape that decides that? Or does the council decide that?
Let me just address that question, 'cause everything that Streetscape does, as is with all the other committees, is a recommendation to the city council. The city council makes all decisions. No other subcommittee makes a decision.
Okay, so it's up to the council, long and short.
It's unfair to criticize Streetscape for making a decision or not. They're gonna make a recommendation and as the city council has the choice of deciding what that ultimate dollar amount is.
So then why do we even bother with putting in any numbers? Why are we even bothering with fifty percent, up to fifty percent, or even putting, you know, twenty thousand? I, I don't understand why, if something is fifteen thousand, which could make the city look better, why we wouldn't want to get involved in that?
I'll, I'll answer. Part of that was to, just as the mayor was alluding to, you know, a shrewd business guy could go, I'm gonna take all my deferred maintenance that I haven't done and hallelujah, now the city's gonna pay for part of it. Well, that has no direct benefit to Wooddale? That they're just gonna paint and, and fix the broken awning, you know, they're not really gonna affect any real change. They're just jumping in so that the city can pay for half the stuff they should've done over the last couple of years anyway, so...
Right, there'll be some people that will benefit from that, obviously, but yet it's still gonna make the city look good.
Right. But again, we're trying to, to go beyond that, to do something a little bigger, starting out to, to, and by doing that, all the other people are gonna jump in too. So hopefully it'll be a more robust program.
Can I just say something again? It, you know, those are the projects that sometimes maybe the little guy can't afford is the fifteen grand because maybe he's just getting by or maybe whatever. So in the meantime, we spend a hundred and twenty thousand on a big project. Next door to it is a guy that can't even afford to paint. I'm saying that the little projects should be as important to the city as the big projects. If these guys can't afford to paint, then maybe we should give them incentive and say, okay, we're proud of our city, here's ten grand to paint. I'm not, I'm not saying ten grand. I'm just saying a number. Saying the important little projects can mean a lot. I'd like to see that number change.
Mr. Murmurs.
Yeah, just to something we went back to before. I didn't have the number. I have the number now, just in case you were wondering. The, the utility tax is five percent and it is a fixed percentage, but variable upon the rates that residents are charged for NICOR and COMED. And on average, it's about fifteen to twenty dollars a household.
Alderman Jacob.
Just have a few questions as to some of the, the way this is set up. On number six, says an applicant may be required to submit a personal financial statement. Would we want that to be they must submit? I mean, would we want to know that, yes, they could afford this instead of may?
Ms. Henigan.
That's what the council would like it to be, sure.
I would, to, to, to go back to Alderman Roy Wesley. I mean, we tried not to, as much as he might say there's too many hoops, we tried not to create too many hoops. So if it's a bigger project and there's more concern as opposed to a ten thousand dollar project or a twenty thousand dollar project, there's less concern. And, and some people might not want to come forward and present all their financials to us for that reason. But if you're giving somebody a hundred thousand, well, you want that kind of money, then you need to bring the financials. So that's why we kinda left it the way we did.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, please.
Regarding that, I had to also highlight it here. May, may be required, must, I mean, maybe we should have a threshold on when we require it. I mean, ten thousand, twenty, because later down here, we say the first, once they pay their permits, the first thirty percent, the city's gonna pay. Well, what if the guy all of a sudden says, oh, I don't have any money. Well, we got these improvements, so I guess we're done. I want to make sure that they have the...
I, I would, I would almost prefer to change the payments to safeguard for what you're talking about as opposed to the...
I believe we brought that up. I think I mentioned it or somebody mentioned it or a couple agreed up here. On the building that we're doing now, we put in the first thirty percent. They had Brad check and yes, that's what we did. They should put in their thirty percent first and then we put in our thirty percent. Or fifteen, fifteen, I guess, makes thirty percent. We're putting thirty percent of ours. So do we both put in fifteen percent at the same time? Brad said, no, we put in our thirty percent right at the front. I want to make sure we're covered. You know, the financials is a big key. I want to, I'm a shrewd businessman.
Right, and, and that's why I, I agree that we should probably control the payment structure more. Alderman Peter Jacob.
My final question was on number eight. It talks about the three years that they have to maintain it. Was there any reason we use three years? Just a question. I mean, is that what other towns do or is that...
Ms. Henigan.
Yeah, the three-year number was one that came up with several other communities we looked at.
Alderman Jacob.
I guess a question to Alderman Woods. Would we want that to be more than three years or is three years sufficient?
I, well, we...
Is it may be required for financials? You know, we just had the same incident that we just did one on Front Street. And I'm hearing, oh, yeah, you got it, you got it, got it. No problem, no problem. Then it comes down to it, it got nothing. So I like to see...
Not true, but continue.
Okay, you don't know that. My, it says that may. Why don't we just, again, we don't know if they're gonna have the money. If we have their financials, at least we know. Another thing is, it's costing ninety-six thousand dollars out of utility tax roughly when we do projects like this. Ninety-six thousand. We have Irving Park to do. For water main, that's gonna be a million dollars. Why don't we push that up and get that done first? We gotta get the water to the businesses if you're gonna fix them up too.
We don't fix up the town, there won't be any businesses. Mayor, please.
Some of the eligible expenses, we've got exterior lighting, signage, interior life safety improvements. I mean, I thought this was strictly on the outside. I mean, life safety issues should be addressed first and foremost, but should the business owner have some responsibility of taking care of that himself on the inside? I, I believe they have inspections from, from the city, the fire department as far as, aren't those the things addressed already that they have to have it set up?
Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, I mean, typically those kind of items are checked on business license inspections and on the annual inspections. Unfortunately, due to lack of staffing, annual inspections have not been completed annually. So, I mean, we just try and catch up as we can. If we find or get complaints about properties, we kind of focus on those first.
Well, again, that's what I'm saying. We're concentrating on the outside and beautification and everything. I mean, business owner has to have some type of responsibility. I mean, if it's a sidewalk outside and it's not handicap accessible, it's a different story.
Right.
You know, we should be taking care of signage. I mean, some of those signs are over twenty thousand. I mean, we've got a lot of signs that need to, they're pole signs, so twenty thousand dollars for a sign, I don't see a problem with that. We'll be, sorry, are we saying we're going to help with the signs? Because businesses came to us a few years back and it's kind of said, well, so we change the philosophy. Yeah. I'm all for helping and improving what the city looks like because it's been stagnant forever and needs to be cleaned up. I just want to make sure, you know, up at the top here, it says on number two, facade improvements, fifty thousand. Landscaping, parking lot, decorative site lighting, fifty-five thousand. And then the interior safety, ADA accessibility, twenty-five thousand. So is that like a threshold for each item? Because above that, I think it was a hundred and thirty thousand total.
Ms. Henigan.
Yes, that's correct.
So what we're saying is if somebody's doing the outside of the building and it's really a hundred and thirty thousand, the max we're gonna give you is fifty thousand. And then if it comes to your landscaping and everything, we're gonna give you fifty-five thousand. The number...
Correct.
Sounds a little, wouldn't it be more for the building than the parking lot?
Not necessarily, given the prices. And, and this got into the handicap thing. So when reconstructing parkways and sidewalks, cafe-type stuff, and then bringing in concrete ramps for accessibility and stuff like that, which would then carry into the building, that's how it, you know, it was kind of a domino thing. One thing led to the other thing. So we've had to draw some lines somewhere and, and this is kinda where we started based on some of the communities we talked to and our, our present experience.
Let me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Mayor, please.
So this max, it was a hundred and thirty, but, you know, I did, I honestly, I called again to Addison and they had a big, big mall. So, I mean, we have George Town and we have Cross Street, I have the Jewelosco. That was a big one. I think that was one of their bigger ones. I think they put in, I think he said it was two hundred thousand off the top of my head, or three hundred thousand. That was a huge project. And that's where they went above that twenty-five percent. So we capped it at one thirty where, where then it's a cost like, page basis, please.
So it, just, I'm gonna recap. I think there was some need to fine-tune the, the payment schedule. I think a few people agree with that. And Frank, you wanted to change the threshold from twenty to what number are you proposing?
I'd like to see it ten thousand.
So the, the people have to have ten thousand in or the total project would only be ten thousand, meaning they would have five thousand. Correct. Because, and, and again, not to change your mind, but part of the thinking was we didn't want to, you know, theoretically, a lot of people could come in to paint their buildings and we'd be sitting there trying to make these hard decisions of what building I paint and what building I don't paint.
I, I say paint them all. Paint them all. I mean, come on, look at what we look like.
Okay, so we'll change it to ten, the twenty thousand to ten thousand. Okay. Peter Jacob, Alderman Jacob.
One other question. I know we talk about here that it's, talks about, that they have to be paid up to the city if they owe any money. Could we put something in there to make sure that they also could pass a inspect, a building inspection so we make sure there is no problems prior to doing this? You know, instead of, once it's approved, then John Forrest or someone has the department go in and sees all kinds of problems and now we're dumping money into something that has severe plumbing issues or whatever it might be?
Mr. Forrest.
That's something that we do administratively. We, we would do a pre-inspection prior to committing any city funds to that sort of a project.
Okay.
Do we, do we have that language or that's just generally what we do?
That's just what we do.
Okay. So is that good?
Yeah.
Do you wanna, do you guys want to put it in that there's a pre-inspection component? And, and then how elaborate is that pre-inspection component? Mr. Forrest, can you, kinda, what do you think we would do? What should we do?
Well, again, we would go in and...
And who pays for it?
I mean, we would go in, staff could go in and, you know, give the building a once-over if we saw anything that may raise a red flag as far as there being any structural issues, any major life safety issues or non-compliant, you know, maybe illegal, non-conforming conditions. Those would be the types of things we would look for. If staff recognized something that could turn into be a problem, you know, cracked foundations or, you know, structural members that we had a question about, at that point, we would have an architect or a structural engineer come in, do an inspection, do a report.
But let me, let me comment to that because the, the, assuming we're not, we're doing more than painting the building. So we're not gonna do a full building inspection to paint the building, are we? Is that our intent? So what I was gonna say, going back, so if they're gonna do a bigger project, I'm assuming that they have an architect... I'm assuming that they have an architect involved and the liability should go to the property owner and his architect. Shouldn't be incumbent upon us to find the flaws in the building. Although I understand what you're saying, there's a fine line of how we would want to address that. Do you agree or?
Yes, I agree. And as I say, I think we would want to look for illegal, non-conforming conditions, maybe remodeling that would have been done without permits where there's unsafe issues that need to be addressed. You know, but staff would not really be in a position to make the same kind of inspection or comment on conditions as an architect or structural engineer would. But if we rec, if we saw something that raised a question, we could require them to do that.
So then we could do our general business license inspection to make sure that it at least was most recently inspected?
Yes.
Does that seem acceptable?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just so that we have a clearer understanding of what that inspection is and what we're getting. And then the next thing, I think that everybody, hang on a second. Alderman Eugene Wesley. You're welcome.
My question here is, we are only doing this small portion here. And Frank Lazar brought up a point about painting buildings. Why are we not offering this program from borderline of Betsville to the borderline of Mitaska? Why are we not doing, are we, are we absoluting the businesses there and this kind of thing? Or in the downtown area? Because if you drive down Irving Park Road, I'll tell you down by Betsville, some old buildings might want to do this too. It seems like we are just concentrating on a certain area here. Okay, which I think is wrong because we'll bring up the, we'll bring up the point here is why would we do the landscaping that we're talking about in industrial over by the trees? When that is not even in this plan here. I'm just saying, why would we not do borderline to borderline? I have stressed my concern is why are we just doing this little tiny downtown area and not borderline to borderline? I stressed before, if we bury ComEd lines, we better do it from borderline to borderline. Because you're going to put six poles or whatever you buried and then we got six poles that ain't buried. They're going to do it, the city is a total city, not pieced-meal this together.
Mr. Verbus.
Yeah, Alderman Wesley, what he brought up about the ComEd bearing of lines is a perfect example. I think as with the ComEd bearing of lines, so goes the facade improvement program where there's only so much money to go around and you want to place an emphasis, as we did on the power lines, to the downtown area and then, you know, years down the road, you know, branch off. Same as facade, you spend your dollars now on the downtown area, same as you decided on the ComEd, for economies of scale and then branch out as time goes on. At least that was the thought behind the ComEd. I assume that the thought process was similar, I think it was with the facade, correct me if I'm mistaken.
Well, Ms. Ennigan? Do you want to expand on?
And when we discussed this at Streetscape Committee, we did mention about this trying to create a visual impact. So having two projects near each other in the town center business district would have more of an impact than having one on the west end of town and one on the east end of town, which is the thinking for limiting it.
Can I ask two more questions?
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
My other thing is, what happened to facade program that we had in place at one time? Christie's I know took advantage of that. John, you know where I have that, how that came about?
Mr. Forrest?
There was a facade program out there.
There was several years ago, as I recall, only Christie's, I think, may have been the only business that took advantage of it. And I think due to a lack of interest, it just slowly died a quiet death.
But what was that policy before? We had have something.
Yeah, it was three thousand or five thousand max that the city would contribute at that point in time.
The only drawback I have on this whole thing is, I'm in favor of making them downtown nice, but I can see what's going to happen here. We're going to do this small area here and then this council's going to change and I have it out there that we do borderline to borderline. We know that happens in the past on this board. The board changes and forget, it wasn't part of our plan, we aren't going to move forward with that project. You know what, I really would like to see that borderline, at least on a map, that we do borderline to borderline. Okay, at least the council that changed, the council changed up here down the line here, they know we had a plan to do borderline to borderline. Instead planning, oh, we only focus on this downtown area. I'm just saying, we've talked about, we doing trees along the railroad tracks. To me, that doesn't even fall under this. You know, you're talking about behind those businesses taking the train. That's borderline to borderline. From concern. So, I mean, I see your point, there was a lot of work put in this. But again, I'd rather see borderline to borderline with this project, or at least in there. That, that's our intention.
All right, let me just make one comment. I understand what you're saying. Our hope is that by having some slight consolidation, that you get more bang for the buck and that things will catch fire and people will improve naturally. This program, we would expect, if done properly, will expand and will expand to its borders. But again, to initially reap the greatest benefit for the city and the residents is to, it's better to consolidate the area that we're targeting and get a bigger bang for our buck, if you will, in that area. The other thing is, before, we really had no formalized program for facade program. So by making this formalized and minorizing it, it will last forever, even for the next council because it is part of the city's policies. That being said, Alderman Jacob.
Two things. Number one, what Alderman Wesley was talking about was the trees. That has really nothing to do with this. This is a facade improvement program. And second of all, I'd like to make the motion to approve the facade improvement program policy with the changes that are put's at.
I'll make a second, but I want to add, and before I get to, just want to add that we should change the pay structure to address some of the concerns that I think Frank Alderman Lazar brought up, the mayor brought up, Alderman Roy Wesley brought up. Maybe there should be a minimum of five payments and schedule out a little more so that the payments aren't ahead of the project as much as they are now. That being said, Mayor, please.
Two other things real quick. On section seven, D1, where it says plans will be provided at the city's expense. We're going to do blueprints for every project? I mean, the business owners got to come up with something.
Ms. Ennigan?
Just to address the entire section seven, the procedural requirements in total, that was all based on how the Front Street facade project that was already approved was done. So we just went to mimic that process, which is why it's all the way it was.
Because that was the first one, we're trying to get this off the ground. I mean, at some point, the question becomes, how much? Was any discussion had in those meetings on how much we should allocate? Because, I mean, right here, we got strategic planning, CIP is coming up. How much money are we going to allocate every year? Because we only allocate sixty thousand in the first building that comes in. Looking for the max of one thirty, well, we can't do it, sorry. That's the end of the program. So, I mean, do we discuss some of that stuff? Or do we give any thought on allocation? Because everything has to be plugged into the CIP. We can't just seat our pants on this one.
Right, but that would, that would be, I would assume, part of that process, that we're going to fund X amount of dollars for that program. No, because there's no real good, and that's really way beyond our scope as the Streetscape Committee is, as a few Aldermen would point out to me.
That'll be a budget decision and.
But depending on what you're going to fund or what that budget light item's going to be, then, you know, that's how we would look at the projects coming in. And that goes to how many get done and, you know, does, we try to get one paint project or smaller project and one bigger project, how many people apply, you know, it's kind of pretty fluid matrix.
I'll just highlight real quick because I had Edison email me today. Just was curious. Since nineteen ninety-nine to now, they spent, they spent almost six hundred and forty-four thousand and the businesses spent almost three million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. I mean, that's a little, that's why I was talking about that fifty percent match. I mean, we're here, they got more bang for the buck. And that's, you know, that's what we're looking for. I mean, that's our goal.
And let me just address that. And I wish we could run the same program coming out of the gate. I think we have to have more skin in the game. The advantage that Edison had or has over us is they have more property fronting Lake Street. We have smaller properties. We have to cause or affect a greater inducement for somebody to come in and take these smaller projects on that aren't necessarily business-wise pen and pencil, the most logical choices for a business proposition. Whereas on Lake Street, you have those bigger properties and they can afford to do that. It's more viable for them to do that. Alderman Roy Wesley.
So by making that statement, the businesses that we focus on is right here in one section, but the businesses that would get a bigger chunk because of the project, so the businesses that are further out of the project will probably end up with a smaller piece of the pie. Correct? Am I understanding this correctly?
I don't know. I don't know where your puzzle pieces are at that you're alluding to.
You're saying fifty percent, we're in the middle here. If we're going to give fifty percent for the project and we're working on a small area, just like Alderman Eugene was saying, that border to border. We're going to, you said we got to start somewhere to give incentives. But the businesses are further out, like over by Target, that not in this map here, are not going to get the bigger piece of the pie. Most likely, the projects are going to be going and you end up with a smaller piece. So what I'm saying is those businesses get less.
So Target, you're saying Target will get less money?
I'm not using, I'm using over by Target. You have the floral shop there, you have Taco Bell there, you got Burger King there, you got other businesses there too, you got Mahar Lumber. So they get a smaller piece of the pie?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, but my statement was.
It's very simple. Fifty per, if you give fifty, what are we starting off with, fifty percent? Say it's fifty percent.
We're starting off with up to fifty percent.
We're starting off with a, up to fifty percent.
Correct.
You're saying, you just said that we have to start somewhere and put bigger, put a bigger bang in the buck.
Correct.
Okay. So you're going to probably change that after we get going here. Now it's probably going to be thirty percent or forty percent.
No, the change could be we expand the borders, not necessarily the percentage. If the system is working or the program is working and the city's reaping the benefit that we intended to reap, then there's no reason to change it, just to modify it and move it further down the road.
So in that case, then what the mayor was saying, then the city portion is going to be at fifty percent?
Up to fifty percent, according to the policy.
Might as well bankrupt the city here.
I'm not quite sure.
That was my question, how much we got allocated? So if we only allocate seventy thousand, then that's all we're going to.
Right, which is up to the city council, including Alderman.
Right. I mean, I can, I can tell you, I know, gas station Irving Park, they're trying to clean up their gas station and whatnot. I'm sure of something, but they're out of the district. Only, I only know that because I was talking to the owner while I was gassing up. I didn't say anything to him because I know this is coming up, but I wasn't going to mention it to him till we know what the ramors are. Somebody like that, I mean, he's out of the zone, but he may be willing to step in because he's, he's looking at redoing his gas station and whatnot. I don't know how much, how elaborate or what, but. I know we're true, I understand, we're starting right here. Next year, we're doing the safety improvements, we're burying the power lines. That's where you're getting the best bang for your buck. But, I don't know, if somebody comes from either end of the town and they need, you know, they're doing a hundred thousand and we give them twenty thousand, it might be worth it. It's definitely a project done. I hate to just handcuff myself. And by no means I haven't told him a thing. I know he's redoing his pumps and this and that here, but he was telling me how much money he spent. I didn't say a word.
Alderman Peter Jacob.
I think we might all be losing sight here. I think the whole purpose of this was for the business town center and the center of town here. And now we want to go border to border. And I understand we should down the road, but to get started, you got to get started somewhere. And the town business center is where we're putting a park, where we're doing the center of town. So I think that's where we need to concentrate at first. And I'm all for expanding the program down the road too, but not initially.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So my question is, Mr. Jacob, by making that statement, you are only concentrating in the town, the businesses downtown here. I don't care how, what businesses is here, okay? There's sales tax coming from every business in here. You just can't pick on just the downtown area businesses, okay? Joe brings in almost a million dollars or over a million dollars in sales tax to the city. So you just can't say, we only going to do the downtown area here, that for these businesses and forget all the other businesses in town, okay? Because that ain't fair. That's a bad statement that you made, which you think of all the businesses. Because all the businesses put sales tax in our coffin here to do projects.
Alderman Frank Lazar.
Decision. I'm going to have to agree with Eugene. I think we should go border to border. There's no reason that we shouldn't. We don't have really that many businesses that we should, we should isolate anyone. And I think to his point, we have a business that puts in a million dollars a year into our pockets and then we're going to exclude them. And I appreciate that we have to have a center point. But the way I feel, any business along Wooddale, I mean, along Irving Park Road that wants to improve, I would be more than happy to help them out. So I absolutely agree, border to border.
Alderman Mike Savarsky.
Not to make it any more confusing, but you are segregating Eugene by saying border to border, only Irving Park Road. There are businesses in the industrial parks, so. But you need to look into the CIP and project more money if you plan on doing all that, so.
Mayor, please.
All right, number one, if we start going in industrial park, basically, the facade program is to enhance the visibility of the main streets. You start going in the industrial parks, you know, I understand what you guys are saying, but at some way, somewhere, we have to draw the line. I mean, if we get on the industrial park, we're going to, we're going to get off pace here.
Well, and before we got off track, that was the intent. I mean, we looked at it and went, do you offer it to the whole city? Yeah, because that's the most fair thing. Then you, the Streetscape and economic enhancements runs into TIF district, runs into other programs. And what was the original goal when we got on here? And that was to prove the downtown center. All the things that we've done, the focus was the downtown center. That was the easiest thing to note. It's part of our zoning code. That's why we did it. We didn't do it to alienate anybody. We were hoping that the program would blossom and expand from there and would carry down the street. But I mean, if there's a general consensus that everybody wants to take it from one end of Irving to the other, the city borders and the same on Wooddale Road, I guess, as long as it's this district, I don't have a problem. Mayor, please.
You brought TIF district. I mean, we're right in the process of having a discussion with all the taxing bodies in town and it seems to be going well. So the industrial park, at least one of the industrial parks is going to be taken care of through the TIF. I mean, unfortunately, the, all the, the other two industrial parks are not parked, but one is already in there. We have to start somewhere. I mean, and again, come CIP, budget, we're going to have to. I mean, and again, come CIP budget, we're gonna have to allocate. If we have ten businesses come up all at once, I can tell you right now, we're not gonna have enough money at fifty percent. You're gonna have to tell somebody that you're gonna have to wait, just so everybody understands. We can't, you know.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Jeff, do we have, we don't have any money left on CIP to do another project this year, correct?
Mr. Murmice.
As I've stated in the past, you know, you have certain items in the CIP that are over, certain items that are under, so until the end of the year, it's, it's, it's hard to, to project. Plus, you, you never know.
So, we don't, we don't know if we have money? I mean-
Well, we could have money today because a project came in under, and then a project we didn't complete this fiscal year hasn't been started yet, and then it could go over.
Well, I'd like to see-
I mean, there's a lot of stuff in the CIP. It's not only construction projects.
If we're gonna go a project like this, I'd just like to see a line item on this. Because, well, exactly.
Well, I believe, we originally budgeted for, for the current facade program, we but, we budgeted more than what we're expending, if that's what you're asking, for that specific item.
So, there is no money left unless we decide there's money left?
Well, the, the project currently, the facade program, came in under budget.
Okay, under.
If that's what you're asking. That specific project.
Okay. But, you know, I wanna add in one more thing.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
The only way I would agree on doing this is if it goes to the CIP and into the budget at that time, and if it goes from border to border. That's the only way I'm gonna know.
Well, it already goes to the CIP, so we're good on that one. Does everybody else agree, border to border?
So, we know how much we're spending, though. Not from a project that you could pull from another project to put into there.
Well, right.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna take from, okay, now, a road project comes in lower, and now we're gonna put it into this project.
But, we said that early on, that we, the council creates the budget for the program when you ask about streetscape. Mr. Murmice.
What Alderman Wesley's concerned about is already addressed, so it's already a line item in the CIP, which you annually could pick the amount you wanna fund that specific item for.
Correct. Thank you. Alderman Jacob.
Just to comment on what Roy Wesley, just, don't we have, I know we originally were talking about doing two buildings, we only did one. So, if we had that budget for it, don't we technically still have X amount of dollars left, or no?
Mr. Murmice.
Well, that's what I just said. That project came under budget, so for that facade improvement program, you do have XX funds for facade improvement program as that came under. But, there could be another program that goes over. I mean, it's just, but for that project, yes.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. I, we gotta add, what?
Is the motioner agreeing to change?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Okay, so does the motioner in a second agree that to change the program and however the wording's gonna be, but the east-west borders of Wooddale along Irving Park, east-west business district borders along Irving Park Road and Wooddale Road, is that acceptable? Does, do you, Ms. Henigan, is there any problem with what I just said?
Um, I, I believe we can come up with some wording to make that work. So, the intention is all along Irving Park Road-
The business district is all along Irving Park-
And Wooddale Road and everything in the town center business district.
Correct.
Okay.
So, that was one, and then we're gonna change so that there's five payments, instead of, I think we have three now. We'll work on that. Mr. Forrest.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment on that, just to be sure everybody is clear on this. The mayor made a statement earlier that we were gonna be paying thirty percent of the project for the first payment. Remember, if this is a fifty-fifty partnership, our thirty percent is actually fifteen percent of the contract.
Right. And he had to pick up the permit, so we, we were trying to cover part of that, but maybe we still could have the, the five payments to, to make it more even. Mr. Forrest.
I think, too, like you were saying earlier, I think that's gotta kinda depend on the scope of work.
Right.
If a project's gonna take two weeks to do, it's silly to do it in five payments.
Well, up to five payments? Is that acceptable, too?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, please.
Real quick, so, when we're talking about this, the facade, we're talking about the front of the buildings or back of the buildings as well?
Just the front.
Mr. Forrest.
No, the scope of work could be pretty much the whole building. Where the facade is defined, it's just the front.
So, let's see, do a brick parking lot.
Okay, so, the, the motioner in a second, are we all okay with the, the changes? Everybody understands what we're?
Can we run down these changes? Make sure I know exactly.
Okay, one, we're extending the, the zone, covered zone, border to border on, business district border to border on Irving, business district border to border on Wooddale Road. The payment section will be payments to be determined up to five payments. What was the?
Dollar amount.
Huh? Mr. Forrest.
The minimum dollar amount from twenty thousand to ten thousand.
Oh, the minimum dollar amount from twenty thousand to ten thousand. Okay, the motioner in a second, you agree?
Yeah.
Mr. Murmice.
We took out the component about the inspection, then?
The, the inspection component would be to just do our standard business inspection.
So, it's not, okay.
No other special-
So, that language still needs to be added, though?
Yeah, well, the test have a current business inspection, no more than whatever sixty days old.
So, I never got my question answered. Who's paying for staff time to go in and inspect these buildings?
Mr. Forrest.
That was the first question. I got one, one, one more after that.
Well, I think in an effort to try and make this business friendly, this, you know, staff will just do the inspection as a courtesy. I mean, right now, we do life safety inspections as needed. I mean, it seems if we're working as partner with the business owner, part of that partnership would be the fact that the city would do inspection and not charge them for it.
I would agree.
And one more thing here, says parking, amount, is that fifty-five thousand dollars on the amount of paragraph two, landscaping, parking lot, decorative lights, up to fifty-five thousand? Again?
Ms. Henigan.
Uh, yes, to receive up to fifty-five thousand dollars, you'd need to spend at least one hundred and ten thousand dollars on the improvements.
So, for example, if I wanna do a brick, well, it says parking lot. What's defined parking lot, does blacktop, concrete?
Ms., Ms. Henigan.
Um, any sort of parking lot that would meet our building code requirements would be eligible.
So, if someone wants to redo their parking lot, they could fall under that?
Does that, you can correct me, doesn't that have to be part of a, part of another project, part of the building? We're not just doing the parking lot? You can correct me if I'm wrong. Ms. Henigan.
Um, as currently written, parking lot and could be a standalone project.
There you go.
Mr. Murmice.
Well, the, the category is landscaping, parking lot, decorative, site lighting. Obviously, let's use our brains here. Nobody's going to approve somebody replacing their parking lot as a facade improved program in the council. I mean, come on.
If I use landscape brick again?
If you do what?
Landscape, landscape brick, pavers.
Still, the council's still gonna decide whether or not they wanna approve somebody's parking lot as a facade improvement expenditure. It's not gonna happen. Well, at least I would think it wouldn't happen.
Mayor, please.
Well, I, I understood that there was a facade improvement in the parking lot and some of these other things, signage, landscaping was part of the project, not the, somebody wants to redo all their sod and spend twenty grand on new sod and a couple new bushes? Good to go.
Mr. Murmice.
Well, I think what we're saying is there could be somebody that has an expenditure, a landscape design plan with really sprucing up the front of their building, and not necessarily their building, but their property with a nice landscape feature, nice brick parking lot and whatnot, and you guys could decide to approve that. But, if somebody's just doing something to maintenance and put in a new driveway, you're not gonna be able to word that so that you're gonna be able to restrict it. It's restricted via the project as presented. I mean, you're never gonna be able to cover this in, in language the way that's gonna make you feel comfortable.
Okay, let's, let's do a roll call.
Alderman Lazar.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
That passes. Next, items to be considered at future meetings, time allowed for variances, that's in December, and ornamental sign purchases in December. Now, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You know what, uh, can I, five-minute, ten-minute break or something before I start mine? Seeing everybody's out?
Well, we gotta get them back just so we can adjourn. All right, let's do a-
You got a form. I got forms.
He's back. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Okay, we're gonna take a, a five-minute, ten-minute break before we start my committee. The public works to order. Roll call, take or note, the same people are here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes on October ninth, 2014. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Three.
That passes. Report and recommendation, purchase and installation of pressure relief valve and not to amount exceed of ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Second.
That is my motion, second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or should I, should I do a roll call on that?
You should, you're spending money.
Yeah, roll call.
Alderman Lazar.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes. Report and recommendation, approval of partial payment number one to John Neary Construction for the Woodside subdivision drainage project, and the not to exceed amount of one hundred ninety-two thousand, ninety-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Roll call, please, or any questions? Go ahead, Eugene.
Is it, is that all completed, done, finished?
Matt.
Um, yes, this isn't a final payment because we are holding back some money for the, the seed, to make sure the seed germinates. So, there's a, I think there's about three thousand, three percent, five, five thousand dollars left over.
All the asphalt is down, all the-
Yeah, every, everything's completed. Everything's completed, except for the restoration work, that we're just making sure that the grass seed grows, and it's currently doing pretty good right now.
Is the seed sowed inside it?
No, not.
Go ahead.
That project's not being sodded due to the fact that it's going to be redone next year with the, the road project that we will approve the design of later. It's the exact same area, so if anything needs to get sodded, this was just a, during, during a recon, a, a non-road project like this, normally what we do is blanket and seed, so that was done this time.
Mike, did you have a question?
This is gonna take care of all that flooding issues that they had in the corner.
Matt.
It will help the, it will, I'm not gonna say it's gonna alleviate all flooding issues.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazar.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes. Report and recommendation, approval of partial payment number three to Swallow Construction for the Ward Two Phase One infrastructure project, and the not to exceed amount of three hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and four cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Eugene.
When is the, what's the completion date of it to be done?
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, substantial completion date is October twenty-fifth. Final completion date, I believe, is November tenth.
Let me ask you a question. What is considered?
Substantial?
Yeah. Asphalt?
Go ahead, Matt.
Basically, anything hard. Anything, any hard surface?
Asphalt, driveways and that. So, that's tomorrow? Or no, that's Saturday?
Saturday.
They aren't gonna make it. So-
Go, um, Mayor, go ahead.
Is that with the, they had some rain delays and?
Nope.
Go ahead, Matt.
Did the staff-
Staff approved, I believe, four rain days, so they have, and that includes up to the twenty-fifth of the month, up till Saturday. So, after Saturday, that's when liquidated damages start, and if not all the asphalt, concrete work is done. Any hard work is done.
Didn't they have, like, a street flooding over there or something, that the street for a danger?
Matt, go ahead.
No, we had, we had, we, they had four days. Those four days included everything.
Go ahead, Peter.
Weather-related.
Uh, I, I kinda want to defer to the two aldermen in that ward to see if they, you know, they're okay, no major problems over there that we're gonna end up having a couple weeks from now.
Well, I think we have to approve the payment. So, regard, uh, go ahead, Don.
Yeah, I mean, regardless of what the, all respect to the two Ward Two aldermen, legal council's gonna tell you, it doesn't matter what they say, and you have to pray the, the job that's, the work's been done for partial pay requests.
Go ahead, Pete.
I, I don't have a problem paying it, but I would like to hear from the two aldermen to make sure that it's done properly.
It's not done yet.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think we should talk about that in open forum.
It's not done yet.
Go, Eugene.
So, my question is, so the next, I, I know legal council's gonna tell me I gotta pay the bill. Now, the next bill that comes forward, we don't have to pay, because they're incomplete.
Go ahead.
Any partial payment for work performed, you'd have to pay. A final payment, if there's problems with the work product at that time with the retainers left over and whatnot, you can discuss options. So, until we reach that point, which we're not at that point, we should cease discussion and pay the partial payment.
Well, I, I would refer this, I have a problem paying this one, but before the next bill comes, I think I need some legal opinion on the next bill.
Okay, um, can we do a roll call, please?
Alderman Lazar.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
And that passes. Report and recommendation, approval of partial payment number two to Ken Construction for the Manhole Rehabilitation Project, Areas One and Two, and the not to exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four of one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Eugene?
Is that completed landscaping that they made mess up front yard still? Is that all completed?
Matt?
Yes, although pro, this project is complete, um, this isn't a final payment because they got, uh, this in to us before, they got through their, through all their project, but that project is done and Ken Construction is out of time right now.
So, were they dug up the front yard for manholes or whatever, because I believe they did several of those? That's all leveled back, sod, back, or seed, whatever we're doing? That's completed?
Yes, all, all, this whole project is complete.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Report and recommendation, approval of amendment number three with H.R. Green for the Elgin-O'Hare Western Access Project, to extend the agreement an additional six months and increase the amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Mike?
Yeah, what was the original amount? I don't remember. I don't have it with me.
Matt, do you have that number?
I think it was like three fifty-nine.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Uh, yes, it was three fifty-three before this extension. Excuse me, three fifty-three.
Okay. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
And that passes. Report and recommendation, approval of change order number one to the 2013 Infrastructure Improvement Project Cedar Montrose Contract, reducing the project contract amount of two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Eugene?
I, I am, do we miscalculate this project, or, I, I just can't believe, believe me, I love getting the money back from a contractor.
Matt, you want to explain that?
Do we miscalculate this? No, there's no miscalculation. A lot of times when projects like this are put out, um, you know, we saved a lot of money for undercut patching, or for patchings, for undercuts, so, uh, when you're doing a total reconstruction, um, you don't know what that ground underneath the, the, the road's going to look like. Is it going to be soupy? Is there going to need to be stuff pulled out? Um, so, more money is put in the budget for that portion of, in those line items. Um, maybe they thought they were going to replace fifty squares of sidewalk, and they only did forty-five squares of sidewalk. Well, there's five squares savings there. So, um, most contracts like this have a little bit of, they have a little bit of wiggle room in it for the safety of the contractor and also for the safety of the city, so that we're not coming back every time we need a little teeny-tiny change order, um, to you guys. So, um, the good thing is, this project came in, two-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars, um, less than, uh, actual work expended, and that's why, um, the contract reduction is just in that amount. It's not, I mean, it's a savings, but it's, it's, it's a paper savings and not a, a money-back savings.
Right, you have a question?
This is on the-
Oh, go ahead, Eugene, I'm sorry. What do you got?
This is on the project needs legal advice, and without our, council.
Okay. Right, do you have a question?
Yes. This page, next, underneath this one, that, for that we're talking about now, what's this one say? I can't read it, it's too small.
Yeah, tho, those are the line item pages of what actually got expended.
You could, you could, you could read this one? Could you read this one?
This one right here?
Well, I don't know if you're, I don't know if yours is the same size as mine. Yours is a little bigger. Okay?
A little bit, maybe.
Okay, I can't read this, so don't give it to me if I can't read it. Please? I, I even have my glasses.
Matt, maybe if you could make it a little bit larger next time. Go ahead, Jeremy.
Thank you. Just for the record, I think that, that it got a little foggy because it's a, it's a black and white print, and this is a, a color worksheet, so I think that's why.
I don't care. I don't care, I can't read it.
Yeah, if you could just make it a little bit bigger next time. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes, we save money. Report and recommendation, approval of final payment request to Northwest General Contractor for the 2013 Infractions Improvement Project, and the not to exceed amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-two dollars and forty-one cents. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, Roy?
What project was this? What street?
This is Cedar Montrose.
Cedar Montrose, this is where the sod was replaced, right?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Oh, why don't you just send them out over by Sweet Baby Raisin, because the soil is missing about this much from the curb?
Matt?
Take another look at that one.
Okay.
So, um, so I got to approve this. Was the punch list done?
There's also warranty on that, is that correct? So, they would have to come out and fix that anyway.
Yeah, but we're not, uh, we're not going to hold nothing back, this is a final payment, correct?
There's still, there's still the warranty bond on this project.
There's one more to go?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Eugene.
This project, there's money. Wait, excuse me, could I go?
The, the warranty bond, the warranty.
How much is that?
Uh, is it three years' cost of the project? Yeah, it's the whole, it's the value of the project for the next three years. So, if, if the roads would go away, there would be a sinkhole or something.
This is lovely. Because, oh, so if we got fifteen pieces of sod that are bad or whatever, we don't get nothing for it in the Public Works. You're not going to go after a bond money for fifteen pieces of sod or for dirt? Let's be realistic, you're-
Matt, you want to say something?
Fifty bucks.
I might.
Okay, uh, Eugene.
Is, is, is the punch list done, this one? Now, I want to know what punch list, because there's two punch lists out there, and I want to know if that punch list is done that Mr. Lazara put together, or are we going by the punch list the engineer put together? So, my question is still here, is that punch list done that he put together? Because I still haven't seen the final punch list from his punch list and our punch list to find out if that punch list is completed.
Matt, go ahead.
I, I believe that all the punch lists of this project is done. There's one, um, issue right now that, um, we're having resolved. Um, at the south end of South Cedar, there is a ADA ramp that popped loose. Um, ARP is supposed to be fixing that, um, in the upcoming days. That is the only outstanding issue that I believe is out there, except for quite possibly Mr. Wesley's Sweet Baby Raisin issue, um, that I'll look into tomorrow. But every other, all the stuff that we went through with Mr. Lazara's project, um, the punch lists that were done by, by Trotter, everything has been completed.
Okay, this-
Go ahead.
Just, you know, I would be voting no for this until I get some legal opinion on this.
Okay, Roy, um, I'm sorry, Peter.
Um, what kind of warranties are given with this project?
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Thank you. Uh, yes, it's a three-year maintenance bond that begins from the date of final payment, so the, the date on the maintenance bond for three years will begin on November seventh, I believe.
Go ahead, Peter.
Well, what's exactly is warranted? Is the sod warranted? Is the piping wa, I mean, what's warranted with our warranty?
All the work.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
All the work from defects, workmanship.
All warranty.
From, from workmanship defects. So, if the sod today is growing and it's green, and next summer it's not growing because it's brown, after it was green in the spring and it's brown in the summer, that's not probably a warrantable effect, because grass sometimes dies. But because the grass is growing and it's green right now, um, I would have to check with, I would have to check with legal on that and stuff, but that, that is how I believe that works.
Go ahead.
Well, then, I guess we just said everything is warranted, so then the sod is not warranted.
From defects of construction.
What?
Roy.
Okay.
We're going to call it Roy.
All right, um, did you get your answer?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Roy.
You call it Roy. My phone just said that. Uh, now I forgot what I was going to say. No, not grass. No, water, 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 water. What are we going on, where are we with the water bill?
Do you want to say?
It has to, it has to do with this project.
Yeah, the water, the water usage did not go over the last time, um, as, as they turned in the water, uh, meter, as far as we are concerned, that they did not go over their allotment of water.
Well, you know, I was concerned about that, and I asked to see that when we, when we were talking about that.
Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, we remember you asked to see that, we gave it to you, um, and you got it.
The first one?